I believe we have one fire suppression system off of Crow's Landing. One of our companies over there that need to maintain every six months per the state of California. I just want to make sure that everybody understands if we're not, we're not doing that, we're putting people's lives at risk. That is, that is very important that we make sure that we, that we have that service. So if we're not doing that now, we're already behind the times. I think, I think that's very important to point out. And if the city council doesn't have any comments, I'm going to open this up. Or anybody, any member of the public that would like to step up and speak on this matter. Mr. Ross, good.
There are a lot of things this evening that I haven't heard talking to other people that I'd like clarification from Chief Ernston. So you said we're going to hire how many guys immediately and then how many guys in December? Because my concern is whether we regionalize or not, we're still not providing per capita the number of firefighters we need.
So when I say we, that was, that was the city of Modesto who will be hiring for our vacant positions.
Well, right, but all, all employees are going to be City of Modesto employees. So whether you hire them as Modesto employees, there's still, uh, those could be lateral transfers into Series or into Oakdale, wherever. Speaking regionally, if we regionalize, how many employees today do we have? We don't have any but the same number. Your intent is to hire how many now and how many before December?
So with this contract, if we do, we will be adding resource at firefighter, we'll add three firefighter positions to the city of Series that they don't currently have.
I'm following that.
Okay.
That wasn't my question. Please pay attention. You mentioned specific numbers of employees that would be hired immediately.
Correct.
Would be hired prior to December. New employees coming into the Modesto system.
Correct.
Or the regionalized system, correct? What were those numbers?
Nine to 12, um, up to 15, depending on if I get any retirements, uh, in July, uh, once the budget's approved. And then, um, we have a safer grant that's out for another nine. And then additional retirements could, uh, plus the four for this contract would be 13. So, um, anywhere, like I said, uh, realistically, anywhere between 15 and 25, depending on the grant, if we're successful in the grant.
For both chiefs, if we gain between Series, Modesto and Oakdale, 25 employees, do we have the staffing we need to meet the national averages that the, the public information officer has been telling me we need X amount of people at each call? We need them there at this time. If we hire those 25 plus what we have now in the region we're going to serve, a very large area, do we have the staffing to meet the, 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 the national average?
I'm not, I'm not sure on the specific on the national average.
We should have been prepared for a question like that.
Well, what I'm prepared to talk about is how we would run the fire department and with our staffing.
So somebody needed to be prepared to answer these types of questions. Our contract needed to be written with words that didn't say desire or, you know, we're just guessing what we're doing. Why are we just guessing? Why are we here just guessing? I'm told we have national averages, you know, that we need to meet from our, 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 you know, public information officers. And I'm told we're not meeting that. And, and I want to give the fire departments the resources they desire and, and the averages that we need. I think we're quick to jump into a regionalized deal because we have someone we know is corrupt pushing it. This council asked for this interim chief to go to Stanislas Consolidated and get a proposal from them as well. We received a letter. I've seen the letter. Each of you have seen the letter that said they, his associates, his equals, that he has a conflict of interest and we push this ideal. We're here tonight. We got a four-year plan that we didn't hear before. That ain't right. That ain't how our people need to operate. We here in 1988, we stopped pushing a volunteer fire service. We here tonight that our contract that with American Medical Response is not adequate, that they're not delivering services. So we're being told because they're lacking in what they're supposed to offer us and they're making these guys' jobs harder, that we need to add another government employee. Why aren't we checking the contract with them? I'm not saying don't hire the, the staff that we need. And don't use Measure H to pay for what we need, but regionalization isn't the answer. If contract obligations are, are not being fulfilled and we can't get these guys to respond in a timely manner. Why aren't we looking at that? Why aren't we looking at taking the funds that Cooper talks about often and putting it towards putting boots on the ground? Or instating a volunteer career combined department? There are men out there like me that'll put on a set of turnouts and know how to put water on fires. I can't go out and help somebody medically. I don't have the, uh, training. I'm not a paramedic. But at one time in this nation, in this state and in this city, men and women stood beside our professionals and we helped for our common defense. We can again, regionalization is not the only option. And it's not immediately going to put boots on the ground in Series, Modesto, Oakdale, anywhere. 1988, we started phasing out the citizens' involvement in our own protection and defense. We need to phase that back in and we need to take into account that some of the issues we have are because we're not looking at those contracts where American Medical Response and these private companies are letting us down. I wouldn't move directly for regionalization. I don't like the idea that my employees in Series, yes, my employees, I'm a shareholder in this corporation. Together we achieve all day long. It's not together with Modesto we achieve. It's by supporting our employees in all our departments. Like, like Councilmember Silvera said, all our departments. Supporting our whole city, being, being the ones that will stand up and stand the wall or stand the fire with these guys. I'll be the first one to volunteer for the 240 hours of training it takes to be certified to help them out. But we're not disseminating that information. We're not saying you guys can train one Wednesday a night, one Saturday a month. You can, you can have the skills that they have and you can help your city. Before we decide to go into a multi-year contract that can be canceled at whim, where our city manager forgoes his sovereignty under our municipal code, why don't we look at other options? Why don't we utilize the men and women in this town that would stand up for our common defense? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Brenda Herbert. I am a lifelong resident of Series. I, nobody loves the community more than I do. Maybe my nephew does. But this is not the first time this has came up. Um, I would say probably 10, 11 years ago, Series and Modesto talked about joining forces. At the time I worked for the congressman and one of our other employees was a Modesto city firefighter. At the time, I will say, I argued with him saying, I am not for this. I do not want Series to lose its, its fire department. I do not want it to go to Modesto. But I am here today to tell you, this is something that Series needs. If not for anything else, for the advanced life support that this Series will gain through this. Maybe a month, month and a half ago, my nephew encountered a situation where his girlfriend had had, um, her second vaccination and he had an accident back in, in August, which he's still in bed recovering from a broken back, broken pelvis, you name it. She was in one room, he was in a hospital bed in the living room where he's been for the past almost year. And she was calling for him. He couldn't understand her. He ended up having to call 911. He was on the phone with the 911 dispatchers for seven minutes and he said, I have to hang up. I have to call somebody. Cause he couldn't get to her. He didn't know what was going on. And they said, who do you want to call? He said, I've got a buddy that's one of the battalion chiefs in Series. I want to call him. They said, we're going to make the call for you. It took ML, or not MLS, excuse me, I'm going back to my days as EMT. It took AMR 15 minutes or so to get there. Battalion Chief Preston was coming from South Modesto on a call. He was out. He got there just right after the ambulance got there. Now, had it been a heart attack, had it been a stroke, had it been a diabetic situation? She may not be here today. By the grace of God, it was just, it was a reaction to the vaccine and they carted her off to the hospital and she was able to come home. But I implore you, if nothing else, if you don't, and I'm not going to say not care, but if you don't want to go the lengths to protect the city the way we need to be protected, at least look at that one issue of, of us having that advanced life support. I'm a former EMT and, and I, i- it's just, it's important. It's, it's something that, that we need sadly. You know, paramedics are, are harder to come by these days. If we have five within our own department, why aren't we utilizing them? Why, I mean, I know why we aren't, but let's join forces with Modesto. Let's get them on board. Let's get this stuff going. I mean, Brett, I know your parents are older and they're down the street from me. If something happened, I mean, it's like, good Lord, we don't, who knows how long it would take them to get there? Because I know that they're stationed all over the city, but how long would it take them to get there? And so I just, I, I implore you all to go with this contract with the city of Modesto. I think it's, it's going to be the best thing for Series. And, you know, I love Series, so I definitely want what's best for Series and I believe this is it. Let's protect our citizens. Let's protect our firefighters. Let's do everything we can because together the city of Series, we do achieve.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angie Doherty Smith. I'm resident in Series practically all my life. Um, I'm in total support of our fire department, uh, with the regionalization. Due to the fact that we will have ALS, working in a local emergency room for many, many years, seeing that, um, excuse me, that, uh, when we get patients brought in, sometimes our emergency rooms are so inundated with patients that it is not uncommon for three to four AMR crews being there, waiting up to, it could be an hour for a bed. So that's a lot of ambulances tied up. So when we have an emergency call that needs ALS service, they may not be available. So, um, I please ask you to come together and let's support our firefighters in the regionalization. Thank you.
Okay, so a couple of questions, I guess, or statements. Regarding last meeting that I watched, where it was indicated that Series Fire was short. I believe it was like 11 employees got ill at one point. And so overtime and not having the resources and, and all that. So my question is, when the people were sick, did they move? Let's say if, if a BC was sick or out, did they move a captain up to an acting BC to cover that? And vice versa with, you know, the?
Everybody that we could move up, moved up. During that, that outbreak, uh, we had one battalion chief that was out on a previous medical injury. I actually was out with COPE. So Chief Preston actually worked 16 days in a row. Uh, we had captains out, we had engineers out, we had firefighters out. We had guys working, you know, 15, 16, 17 days in a row. We moved everybody up that we could move up. And basically did all we could. Again, thanks to our regionalization. Chief Preston was able to get a couple of days off because Modesto Fire Department graciously allowed two of their battalion chiefs to work a couple of shifts. Not once did they ask for reimbursement. They, they covered it because they knew the situation we were in. And I, I, I have to applaud Chief for, for doing that, thinking beyond his own agency, beyond his city, looking at, again, regionally.
Right.
We did everything that we could to move people up into those acting positions that were qualified, uh, which we do have qualified people that, that can do that. So yes, absolutely we did.
Okay. Cause to me, it just seemed like, you know, we're using COVID as an excuse because honestly, when else has this ever happened? I mean, you've been short-staffed before, injuries, that type of thing. But this is like a very unique situation. So it seemed to me like we're trying to sell it that this is something that could happen all the time. So we need Modesto people to come and fill in at Series when in reality that is not the case. It, it's a unique year that we have.
Actually happens very regularly.
Right.
So here during that, that same period of time, uh, we had four firefighter vacancies. What regionalization would do in that particular situation would allow us to draw not on 27 firefighters, but 186. Gives us that depth of organization that we will never have at a small agency. And our, I have to hand it to our, our guys back there. They work their tail ends off to cover shifts, to do what it takes to make sure that stations are staffed. They're all human though.
Right.
And we, and they all need, you know, rest and recovery. So I think that is what the regionalization would do in that particular situation would give us that depth. You know, we have 27 folks who are on the staff right now and three battalion chiefs. So we could go from 30 to 186 able to help out with staffing. That's, that's huge. Especially our agency.
Agreed. But Series has survived all these years with staffing, like when you were short firefighters on the, you know, when you only had two man. So that's been brought up. I mean, I know you're short, don't have a full-time chief, don't have a fire marshal. But is, I believe that that's something that Series can work up to because at one point we had those positions. Granted, we were short the firefighters on the, the crews, but we had that and Series could do that again. And I'm thinking, you know, you look at this, this plan where they put, uh, I believe Chief Ernst did on the, the third year, they'd look at getting a deputy fire chief, fire marshal. To me, it'd be fire chief and then that would be the second year that I would be going after that because of the, the need for a fire marshal in this city.
Can I just respond real quick to that? That was it. That, that's the four-year plan that Chief Otto presented.
And, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Series could do a four or five-year plan on our own. That's what I'm trying to, to get across. We've been there before and pending the economy crashing even worse, but if we continue to move in a forward direction, I think Series can do that on our own without Modesto. Before, I guess my question would be, before we started doing the resource sharing, Modesto would still come into Series and they're still going to help and Consolidate's going to come and possibly even Turlock. They're going to come if we have a structure fire and we need more, um, support. So that's not changing as far as that goes because we're going to get that support because that's how the fire guys work. So that, that's one thing. Um, I do have a question though. You mentioned, after you said fire chief, fire marshal, you mentioned code enforcement. Are you referring to inspection services or?
Yes, uh, through the fire code. So are you still talking about, I'm, I'm confused. Are you talking about the four-year plan or are you talking about the regionalization model?
Well, it was in your four-year plan. So when you said, when you mentioned the, the third year getting the deputy fire chief. Yeah. And then you said code enforcement. So I was curious, did you mean code enforcement or the inspection services?
Yeah, I'm not sure I mentioned code enforcement.
Oh, I wrote it down as soon as it was said.
Okay. Deputy Chief Fire Marshal. Priorities are going to be, yes, code enforcement. That's, uh, enforcing the, uh, life, safety and building codes, um, in structures and public education. Those are the two key components. Third component is fire investigation of the fire prevention, um, module in the fire service, and that's already been taken care of. So we need to focus on code enforcement and public education. And that recommendation was hiring deputy chief, uh, fire marshal in year three. It's going to take a year to ramp up that program. You have to do a needs assessment. There's a great deal of work to be done in developing a new program. Then you start getting out in the field and making those inspections. Year four, you hire the inspector. Just the point here is yes, we can do it on our own four years. It's going to take four years just to get started in a sustainable model versus being able to ramp up year one, near day one, with all of these services in a contract.
Okay, so Series has their own code enforcement officers that can do building inspections. So would that be something that they would look at combining?
I don't think Series has any code enforcement officers doing building inspections.
Well, not, not really. If a code enforcement goes out and, and they get called to a property, they're going to go inside and they're going to do an inspection. All right. That's what I'm saying. I, yeah.
They wouldn't be licensed. They, they wouldn't be licensed to do that. You have to have a state license in order to do.
I think what we're talking about here is, uh, two different items. When we say code enforcement, we think fire, we're talking fire code enforcement. We're talking going out into the businesses and looking for items that are either in violation of the fire code or situations that could lead to a, an incident. Our primary job when we go out and do a, to do a fire inspection is to prevent fire. We want to keep those businesses open, generating tax revenue for the city and also generating revenue for the business owners. So any, anything we can do to get out there proactively and perform a, uh, fire code inspection, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about going out and looking for trash cans.
That would be inspection services that does that, right?
That would be part of the fire deputy chief fire marshal and also the, the, uh, non-sworn code or, uh,
Inspection service. Yeah.
Fire inspector, basically.
Exactly. So I guess that's where I was confused where it said code enforcement because I thought that would be covered with, yeah. So that's why I thought that would be covered under the, the other positions. So that, that's where, um, I was a little confused. Another concern I have is the whole Measure H thing. Series taxpayers voted to have Measure H and when we voted, it was to pay for Series firefighters and police officers. So if we're not going to technically have Series firefighters because they're going to be City of Modesto employees, I see that as a, a major issue. And as a citizen, I think if we did something like that, then we need to look at maybe eliminating Measure H altogether. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I would like to say, first of all, oh, go ahead, Jeremy. Okay.
Staffing, yes, we have always done more with less, right? But at the same time, we would catch a fire and how many EMS calls used to go unanswered when we responded. It was not uncommon for us to run multiple calls and not respond to additional calls that came in. It would go unanswered. So it could be 15, 20 minutes before an AMR ambulance would get there. So with this model, those stations, as soon as the, the resources are drawn down, these battalion chiefs have the ability to start making moves. So as this happens, they start moving resources into backfill.
Perfect example. Last Friday, this past Friday, we had, uh, two out of the three series units along with a, a Modesto truck company tied up on a potential structure fire, which was a legitimate call. At the same time, we had a vegetation fire on the freeway at Service Road. At the same time, we had simultaneous, uh, medical responses. So we had a total of six calls going on at the same time. Because of the resource sharing and the regionalization, every single one of those calls was handled by, by crews. Not mutual aid, but automatically dispatched when the call came in. The next available resource on, you know, available went to it. So again, we've gone so far, again, as a, as a 19-year employee of the city, I do remember those days as well where we were running two-person companies. Just because we did it doesn't make it right. And it was incredibly unsafe for, for us as firefighters and it's extremely hazardous to, to the public. So again, three O staffing, regionalization, four-person truck companies. All of these things are making strides in, in the right direction, mainly for the public. That's who we serve. That's who we raised our right hand for and swore to protect. Secondary is our own safety. So again, the system works every day. This is just the next logical step in allowing us to expand our services, provide the best possible level of service to our customers and our residents.
Let me, let me ask you this quick question. So prior to resource sharing, the old districts you had, so if you were to put that in, let's say today's world, how many structure fires have we had in that district? Not where you're doing the resource sharing and responding to Modesto or having to go to Doubletree because somebody pulled the fire alarm again. But, but how many structure fires would you say Series has had?
Historically, we've run 30 to 40 every year.
Structure, but I mean like
Structural type fires.
Good structure fires. Well, I mean, you know what I'm saying. Yeah, that's true. Bad choice of words. But I mean, we're, you know.
Historically, 30 to, 30 to 50. On a, on a slow year, we would have 30.
Would you agree though, that your number one call is a medical call that you guys get?
Absolutely. 70% of what we do is, is medical.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't know if you remember, but I used to say, we need to get this for Series. Type of service for Series.
And that's
And it was like, no, we'll never have that.
That's where we, we, we lack the, in, in the short, medium and long-range planning that every fire agency needs to have. We don't have a strategic plan because we don't have the people to, to, to do a strategic plan. A strategic plan would say, yes, in two years, we have these people that need to get this training. We have this administrative, administrative work that needs to get done so we can be accredited. All of this would be lined up in a strategic plan. We just don't have the people to do it.
But you have in the past though, right?
No, absolutely. We've, this
I remember.
This agency has never had a strategic plan. We've never had the foresight and the ability to plan ahead. We've always been reactive and day-to-day.
Are you, are you talking in, in regards to the manpower?
Everything.
And specific duties or?
Power, specific duties, uh, management, uh, you know, long-term, short, long-term planning. We've never been able to do it because we've just been so short on staffing. Again, just like every other department in the city, we've basically done everything possible with the smallest amount of people. Every department in the city. And it's not any fault of
Well, and see, that's my thing. It's like, okay, so well, our streets department can't get their stuff done. Estelle will come in and say, well, we'll do it. Estelle will come in and say, well, we'll do it for this. I mean, we're starting, I don't want to set a precedent.
What we're doing here is we're basically getting an advanced level of service for less money. As we're not duplicating services, we're not having multiple fire chiefs, we're not having, you know, multiple fire prevention. We're having one person. So we're paying a portion of fire chief's salary. We're paying a portion of. So that reduced amount of, of cost plus getting extra people. And for the, for, for the citizens of the city.
I wouldn't completely agree with that. I mean, I, I want you guys to be safe and be able to do the jobs that you're hired to do. But it seems like even now with the resource sharing. You know, Series is in Modesto constantly and. You know, yet when I live in Series, I have to have a, a crew from off Crow's Landing respond to my residents if something were to happen. That would be, you know, primary. And as a citizen of.
Let's try to wrap this up. We've been trying to, want to let some other people speak. I do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're probably going to have to just hit the clock and do five minutes because everybody's trying to get home, even though this is a very important matter.
Now, I, I think, and as you're looking at the regionalization, you can't have. More, better support than your firefighters saying, this is what we need to do.
Right.
A council member Rhino mentioned, well, we looked at regionalization a couple of years ago and the prior council said no. Well, it was, and I've talked to some of the former council members and their big thing was. I, if I want to go and talk to the fire chief, I want to be able to just go down to the station and sit down with him. Well, when you have a fire chief doing four duties, how often is he going to be sitting in that office? Probably very little. And, and the, the staffing, administration, Modesto Fire is available. And can schedule to do, to participate in those, those conversations. And one of the things that also has been brought up is, well, we can, we can do the four-year plan. Well, yes, you could do the four-year plan. It'll take you four years to get the minimum staffing in place. When if you enter into the regional contract, you can have it in, yeah, day one. And you can save 1.4 million dollars over the five years. You need to look at, this works for the city and for the employees. And it gets the staffing that is needed for the fire department now. Rather than sticking around and, oh, well, we'll add one here, we'll add one there. In the meantime, the staff is trying to do their job shorthanded. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members from the public here? Let's go to Zoom.
First person with their hand raised is Connie Vascas. Ms. Vascas, I'll unmute your mic.
Your mic. Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor. Just, I just want to ask, how many of the council members were endorsed by the fire department? But are not in support of this move. I am all for it. Sometimes we have to bite the bullet. It's like. Homeless people, they're not going to get the help they need if there's nothing offered to them. We're not going to get the assistance we need if it's not offered to us. We've been struggling for years. We've been struggling with this. And if this is going to get us out of debt. Five years and get us the department that we need in five years, I think it's well worth the push. I think it's something we need to seriously consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, city clerk, before we move on to the next person, I'm sorry if there was anybody standing up in the public that wanted to speak. Okay, sounds good.
Next person is Rebecca. Rebecca, I'll unmute your mic.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Rebecca Harrington and I live over off of South Ninth Street. So I've had the privilege of working with the fire department personnel at the Paco Station. And I can tell you from our experiences here locally that they have been called upon. And have had the assistance from the Modesto Fire Department. And I see this as a win-win for the community. Because personally, myself as a person who has major health issues, I'm stage four metastatic breast cancer that's metastasized to my bones. If I have a major incident, if I fall and break a bone. And my fire chief and his department there on Pacos wants to come over and help me. But they can't administer some needs that I have because they don't have the certification. And I have to wait fifteen to twenty minutes for front, for somebody from AMR to respond. I'm in a life and death situation. And for the community to not look at this as being an opportunity, as a win-win for the community. To provide much-needed services. They're not saying this is going to be a forever. But it's a stopgap for what is not in place. And when you have persons who have the ability to provide their services. But because the department is not certified to provide them, that's a disservice to your community at large. And I see that as being. Something that needs to be addressed for everyone, not just myself, but for everyone in the community. In addition, I feel that these two departments have already worked hand-in-hand with one another. And I see the, the ability for Modesto to help Series and Series to continue to help Modesto. And they work together. It's like united we stand, divided we fall. We can't fall anymore. Just because something has happened in the past or hasn't happened in the past. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't be proactive. We don't want to be reactionary. We want to be proactive for the community. And I myself can tell you, I commend. Series Fire Department for how hard they work. I've seen them out here when we had the Pubbles Pellets Fire. And I commend the Modesto Fire Department for their services and bringing and coming out here. And recently, not so recent, but we had a fire in our community and they all work together already. So that unification of those two departments is just going to be a smooth transition. And if, if it doesn't work, you have the ability to change it. But for the immediate sense, if you can provide these services now, rather than four or five years down the road. Then we need to make the right decision for that, for the community at large. And I am wholly in support of this. And again, I just want to say to all of them, all of our firefighters and our. Other law enforcement, you know, thank you so much for your services and what you provide. And I just look at this being an, an opportunity that needs to be taken advantage of. And to be moved forward and do the best thing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Zoom, in Zoom is Kathy Foster. Ms. Foster, I'll unmute your mic. Your mic is unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, council. I know you're probably exhausted, but I, I appreciate you hearing everybody. My name is Kathy Foster and some may know me, but for those that don't, I want to be completely honest and tell you that I am a wife of a Series Fire Captain. But today I am going to solely speak as a citizen of the community, okay? A citizen that's been involved in this community for the past twenty-three years. I've done organizing, supporting, fundraising and, you know, anything I can to create a better series for all. That said, it, it is unfortunate that my feelings. On this subject have moved me apart from many of the fire department members that I consider my fire family. This obviously has saddened me deeply and even though my opinions will tear apart some of those relationships. That I do treasure, I want my voice to be heard as a citizen, wanting what is best for my community. And I must say that sadly, I, I've, I've seen, I've seen this. I've been around the fire department for twenty, twenty, almost twenty-two years now. Sadly, it has been probably ten-plus years since our fire department has had a full-time fire chief. That was able to solely concentrate on growing the fire services. This is obviously worn down our firefighter morale. But the answer is not to disband our fire department. The answer should be to hire a full-time fire chief. One that can take charge of what is needed to grow and develop our department. Our city manager even said earlier, our city's finances and sales tax revenues are in really good shape right now. Our fire department budget is 8.3 million dollars. We're not like Oakdale City Fire where they were needing assistance. We are growing on our own. And as for the resource sharing, yes, it benefits Series, but it also benefits Modesto just as much. So that's not going to go away. I do want to comment on the measure H funds, whether they can be used or not. I feel this comes down to a difference of letter of the law versus intent. As noted in the resolution, a quote, per the opinion of the city attorney, it is felt that measure H funds can be used. I will stand strong on my conviction that that was not the intent. To the citizens when we were getting the votes to pass that measure. I was a key member on the measure H campaign committee. I served a few years on the measure H oversight committee. And I feel I can speak from a very well-informed position. I know what we told our citizens and our intent was not to put our city in a place where they needed to contract out for services. And use tax money to pay another fire department for services or give up our own fire department. Our intent without a doubt was to create a stronger fire and police department. That could grow and expand in personnel and services. And frankly, I feel if the council were to pass this regionalization. You would most likely find that there would be quite a bit of citizen backlash, obviously. You've seen some. And I would not be surprised to see a petition created to recall that measure. And that would be a tragic result that could end in seven fire positions having to go back to the general fund. And I just feel like we don't want to lose that funding. We don't want to do anything to jeopardize that funding. So I, I just want to remind you because it's been said, you know, a, a couple of presentations ago. They talked about different mottos and different sayings and, and I know it's been said tonight, but I just want to remind each council member of our series motto and that's together we achieve. So let's stand strong as a city and achieve what we can. And grow our fire department on our own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Greg Scudder. Mr. Scudder, I will unmute your mic.
Good evening, council. Thank you guys for staying up so late. I know it's, it's been a rough one. You know, I had written a bunch of stuff down and I'm going to go ahead and put that down. I'm going to look at it because I'm going to speak with my heart and what's best for Series. First of all, with us implementing this contract, absolutely a hundred percent, we will be saving lives. And that is my number one priority. As a, as a member of the city of Series, if we can save one single life. This contract will absolutely save lives. The training, i- if, if, if I could speak with, with chief, you know, I, I know we run quite a few calls together, Series and Modesto. And I know that we don't have a training plan at this moment. How, how much superior will, will our training program be if we step, when we step in with this contract?
He's just grabbing his mic. Second please.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Hi, this is Chief Ernst. I apologize. I was trying to figure out, turn the mic on. You know, I don't want, I wouldn't call it superior by any means. We work hand-in-hand together. I think the, the joint training facility that we've put has certainly helped. But we do have standards that we've been able, luckily due to the size of our organization, that we're able to afford. Like ensuring that all employees who hire go to standardized fire academy. That hasn't always been the case here in Series, just because sometimes it's very tough and you only hire one or two employees to put on a, a full academy. We have taskbooks that are assigned for each position and there's training behind that. So we have spent years developing a training program. We're proud to be partners with the city of Series now in training, but I think it'll only, this contract will only help enhance that training.
Absolutely. That sounds fantastic. Also, I'd, I'd like to comment on, you know, and, and since Art retired. We've had, what, eight fire chiefs, I believe? And, and I actually, Toby Wells was the acting, I don't even know what you would call it. He was like the fire chief, right? Correct? For, for quite a bit of time there. I, I guess I'm not going to ramble on too long. I guess what I'm trying to say is, it seems that the city of Series hasn't been able to figure out a fire chief plan. You know, and, and like I said, I, I think we should be in the business of saving life. And I've told, talked to multiple series firefighters and the huge majority are all on board for this. They really want to protect the city of Series. You know, ALS services is going to be huge. That will absolutely save lives. Instead of sitting on the side of the water when somebody's drowning, we could jump in and help with the correct training. Hazmat, chemical spills, instead of sitting around there looking at the person, these guys could be trained and jump right in. And this could happen soon, guys. I mean, this is a huge deal. If we don't accept this contract, I, I, I mean, it's going to, this is, we're ten years out of being able to do anything like this. So I thank you guys for your time. I'm not going to hold you guys up anymore. I appreciate everybody's service very much and thank you guys.
Thank you.
Next person is Jean Yeakley. Yeakley, I'll unmute your mic.
Yes, boy, what a, what an evening. One of my issues is really not an issue, but through all the years I've lived here, you know, tonight I hear all these different things. That we need and don't need. And, and one of the things that really comes up the most, it seemed like when I was listening. Was not enough emergency services as far as EMTs. And, and, you know, I talked to a. A fireman at Save Mart not too long ago. He was in for this particular contract. But I always wondered, how come if these people, you know, heart attacks, diabetes, well, there's a lot of calls just for medical. How come Series has never farmed out for some EMTs on the fire department? I don't know how you would do that without paying them more, but it seems like they don't have enough. And these people are asking for emergency services for, you know, really serious issues in their health. And I, I think if maybe they get some EMTs out there, this could eliminate some of the stuff besides, you know, whoever wants to go into the contract. But most of the people tonight seemed like they were worried about, you know, an ambulance coming to their house or a fire truck coming. They can't do none because they're not classified to do that or certified, excuse me. And how come we've never done that and why can't we do it today? Get some EMTs on our fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
No other in Zoom.
Do you have any emails?
I have two email course comments that we received. Read those into the record. First one is, good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Tim Robertson and I am the executive director of the North Valley Labor Federation. Which represents over fifty thousand workers and their families in the region. Our members include construction, healthcare, education, service, retail and frontline public safety workers, including EMTs, paramedics and firefighters. Our work includes improving the conditions of all workers and fighting to strengthen our communities through local policy. When I was approached about the city of Series potentially contracting its fire service with Modesto Fire. And given the rationale, I was convinced this would be a big win for the residents of the city of Series and city staff itself. The opportunity to greatly improve fire services and emergency health responses. Responses while providing short-term budget relief would be a win-win for the city. From my experience, opportunities to provide expanding staffing for fire services, new training and administrative infrastructure for the. for fire services, new training, and administrative infrastructure for the department, and the addition of paramedics typically require extraordinary increases in funding. It's a credit to the series and the Modesto Fire Departments, as well as their respective unions and city staff, that they've managed to create a plan that would do all of this while saving the city approximately five hundred thousand in year one and much more in the immediate future. This, to me, is clearly not a partisan issue, but an example of good governance. Negotiators and city staff are adapting to a changing funding and service area environment and proposing innovative and effective solutions in order to approve services in a fiscally responsible manner. This is how it's supposed to work. This proposal has a few great outcomes that should be mentioned. They include better staffing for the department from top to bottom, expanded training to encourage highly skilled firefighter, firefighter, excuse me, firefighters, and streamlining of robust and necessary maintenance costs. All of these will lead to immediate and lasting improvements to the services provided to the residents of series. However, I want to draw attention to the addition of paramedics to, paramedics to standard fire crews. The addition of more locally-based paramedics trained to provide life-saving services has proven time and time again to greatly improve outcomes of those facing all kinds of medical emergencies. People are facing life or death events in their lives nearly every day in series. And having fully trained mobile paramedics on fire crews will greatly reduce the response time to provide life-saving care. Who among, who among us has not had family member or even ourselves stricken with a heart attack, a stroke, or a traumatic injury? These are among the thousands of health emergencies that you can say without exaggeration that every second counts in mitigating the damage or even saving the life. Do we not want residents of series, our family members, our neighbors, and our friends to have the best chance of surviving what undoubtedly is the worst day of their life? And to do so while saving the city money, this should be a slam dunk. Members of the council, I strongly encourage you to approve this deal to help create a more efficient and modern provision of services and support the firefighters who are already on the front lines and deserve, and deserve as much. Saving money while improving services should not be divisive. It's good government. Thank you very much for your time. Next comment is from Sherilyn Bar- Barros, mayor from the city of Oakdale. On July 1st, 2019, Modesto Fire began to serve the residents of Oakdale. This arrangement has not only exceeded expectations from an administrative standpoint, but has also been very well received by the community. When Oakdale began to contact, contract out for fire services, I was concerned that a part of our community identity would be lost by not having our own fire department. This concern faded away when I attended one of Modesto Fire Department's fire prevention presentations at one of our elementary schools, where the students and everyone in attendance was, and, and entertained and taught by the fire department clowns. I am extremely grateful for those amazing firefighters who served our community as members of the Oakdale Fire Protection District and the Oakdale Fire Department. Their legacy remains intact, and we will continue to celebrate that history while at the same time looking forward to providing amazing fire protection services to the citizens of Oakdale and the Modesto Fire Department. I would like to wish the best to the city council and the citizens of series.
Next comment.
Next comment. One last person.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Joe Spanning. I'm an eleven-year resident of series and the Secretary Treasurer and Political Action Coordinator for the Series Firefighters Local Thirty-Six Thirty-Six. I've heard and understood the concerns of the citizens and council members. A repeating concern that I've heard is that we have an open council seat. We disagree that having an open council seat should be grounds for delay or for voting down this contract proposal. Regardless of having an empty council seat, city business needs to continue. We've had multiple firefighters mention our vacancies within our fire department over the last year, including up to four firefighter vacancies at one time. This doesn't stop. It keeps on going. We need to make sure we do our due diligence and the duties that we have carry on. Although, uh, the series municipal, municipal code may need some language changes. It's been addressed by a couple of council members as well, uh, in our conversations that we've had. These changes can be made following meetings that we have while still addressing this contract. Without delaying it. There's been a couple of things that have been brought up, uh, Redford brought up the number of fires that we've had recently. In 2020, we had fifty-one working structure fires, twelve of them being commercial working structure fires, not just a trash can on the side of the building or a ceiling fan that had caught fire, working structure fires. So last year was definitely a busy year on that scale that Chief Saper referred to between or thirty and, and fifty working fires. Mr. Yackley brought up a point about us needing more firefighter EMTs. A hundred percent of our line personnel are at least EMTs. Five also being included as paramedics, which is a higher level of training. One thing that we ask of you tonight is to book on this contract with the merits and the facts that you see in front of you. Not with emotional-based decision-making. Some of the emotional complaints that have been seen on social media and Facebook. The facts are, this is going to increase our service level, increase the number of firefighters within series, build a relationship with Modesto Fire, allow us to have a fully-staffed and robust training division, fire marshal position, and fire prevention division. All of these things are great benefits to citizens of series. And we, as a series professional firefighters, look forward to entering into this contract to provide a higher, yet financially responsible level of service to the people of series. Questions I can answer?
Thank you. We have no further comments? Okay, go ahead.
Mark attending B at Zoom, I will unmute your mic.
Hi, my name's actually Tina, and I'm the wife to Mark, who's a firefighter. He's, uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to adjust here. I just wanted to speak up on behalf of the firemen, and you know, my husband is a hard worker, as are all of the firefighters. And one thing I'm not hearing at all is we're in a, in a pandemic where we've got, you know, the potential for our firemen to become ill. And what happens when, when there's an outbreak? Where, what happens to the firemen? We at home, we wait for them. They come home exhausted. What you're not hearing is exhaustion. We're not hearing structure fires. You know, call after call after call, three calls a night, four calls, and going on when you have COVID. You, you've got, you've got a fireman with the potential to be gone on call, on, on, you know, on, on tour for three, four days in a row. You know, to call after call because someone's out sick. And I'm, I'm a small business owner, and I'm going to tell you that the firemen, Modesto and series, they're all friends already, with or without any contracts, with or without, you know, any merger of any sort. They're already a team. They're work, they work together perfectly. Um, if I talk to a, you know, a client that comes into my studio, I own a yoga business, you know, for sure, they know each other. Oh, who's your husband? Who's your husband? They're already a team. They're already doing it. And when you have them go out, someone goes out sick, someone goes out ill. What happens is the ones that are at work, having to pick up the shift, they're exhausted. And if you want to talk about serving the community, ta- talk about someone sleep deprived, talk about someone that is half asleep and really fighting for their emotional well-being, for their mental health. These are the parts that, these are the things that, they're not robots. And for, for someone to be against this is just, it infuriates me as a wife to be here to hear anyone to think that it, it is more than about money. It's, these guys are humans. And when you have a human that's going out on COVID and trying to recover, giving, giving them ten days to, to get restored and go back. And in case you haven't known, coming off of COVID, you're not fully recovered. When you go back to work, you're tired, you're exhausted. And so I just think that you guys need to really put into perspective, you know, yes, there's money that needs to be accounted for, but you know what? That money's not going to mean anything if you guys don't have the quality firemen to go out there and serve the community and instead leaving Modesto to, hey, can you come help us out? It's better to plan than to have Modesto have to go help out series or series to have to go help out Modesto. Why don't we just band together and say, all right, here we go. Now we can strategize like good business people, rather than, it's, it's like inviting someone to your house to help you clean the dishes. They're not going to get it right because it's not their home. If you make this, them in unity, it's one home. It's one camp serving all of this area. And so I, I'm just kind of like, my mind is blown when I hear like, why, why not? Why not? We could bring on another chief, sure, but you know what? It's old. It's time to do something new. If something's not working and you keep trying to nickel and dime things into working, it doesn't fit. It's time to move on. So I just wanted to speak up because I love my husband. He's my soulmate, and I not, I know that I can speak from passion to say, someone needs to do something to help the firemen. They work hard. They serve, they're way underpaid, and I think it's time. So that's all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nobody else, a, a public comment is now closed. We can, uh, bring this back for council. Take a motion?
Or is there further discussion before we have a motion?
If that's, if that's what you want to do, go ahead.
Well, I, I, it troubles me that tonight we hear that we have an ambulance problem, ambulance response problem in Siri. Last meeting, we hear that there's an alternative, rather than doing regionalization, that we could, which we may have should have done a long time ago, was to have some kind of a strategic plan to get our fire department, you know, more, more equipped. And I think series has had a fire department since nineteen eleven. And I think finding out these things this late in the game, and let's just jump into regionalization, is really not what we owe our community. I think we owe our community the opportunity that we know we have another plan, that we look at a four or five-year plan and strengthen our fire department.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and get my statement out of the way. There's a new, uh, there's new members in the council, and I know that everybody wants good positive change, and that's why we're here. And some people don't like change, but the change, I believe, is the right move. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilperson, I don't know if I can, uh, trust you in that you can't even support marijuana development money being dedicated to our public safety services. How can I take you seriously that you're going to commit to a four-year plan? Uh, when we're supposed to live within our means and, uh, not overspend, it's an additional two million-plus dollars uh, for basically the apartment we have now with a battalion chief in four years. I, I just don't think that's a serious argument that you have. Having said that, I, I would like to see or ask what municipal code changes, uh, need to take place if this contract is going to move forward.
I did not see many taking the first cut at this. I think the major change is for the Measure H Committee and the future expenditure plans. That's where the real change will come.
Measure H and the expenditure plan?
Yes.
Well, I, I just don't feel comfortable, uh, you know, i- i- if we don't have a plan for the municipal code, which is, you know, supposed to be the guiding document, uh, for how we act legally as a city, moving forward, if, if we don't even have a, a real clear-cut idea on that.
Well, we would have to, uh, prove this before we
Before we change.
entertain the changes, but they would, we would make conforming changes anywhere, you know, if we have other procedures and, and anything. But again, as I saw, it's going to be the Measure H committee where the, the biggest change is going to be, and that is, uh, the expenditure plan, of course.
Vice Mayor, I see where you're coming from. We can change the municipal code after, if we all decide that this passes, and then also we got to look at Measure H moving forward afterwards. I think it's going to have to just all fall into place.
Thank you, Mayor. And then Chief Ernst, I do have a another question that I thought of for you. Uh, reading through the contract, it said, uh, if other agencies join, uh, the contract might be reduced. Is there going to be, is Oakdale, the city of Oakdale, going to see a reduction, uh, in their cost if series joins?
So we've been working with both the Oakdale Fire District and, uh, the, uh, city of Oakdale on their extensions, uh, not knowing what this contract could bring. Uh, we've priced those contracts for, much like we did with this one, for the affordability to try to to gain that. Uh, it is in the contract. If efficiencies are found fiscally through these arrangements, then that would be passed back to the contracting agencies, portionally what they put in.
And then if, uh, potentially another city, a turlak was to join, series and Oakdale could potentially see reductions in their cost as well?
Correct. If there's, uh, like you said, if there's fiscal efficiencies, um, from there, and we have had um, inquiries from a few other agencies. Um, we have no official, um, talks at this point, um, but there's interest. And, uh, again, if there's efficiencies found per the contract, it'd be passed, that passed through.
Thank you, Chief.
Counsel.
Okay, my turn, I guess. First of all, I want to thank everybody that's worked so hard at this, both the chiefs, all the firemen, the captain, the battalion chief, all the fire, everybody. It's been a, a long labor of love or not, or not very much love, but so thank you guys for taking the time either way. Um, and taking it seriously and making sure we have all the information. Um, none of us up here are firemen and know really how it works, so we rely on you for that. And you've done an amazing job to make it clear to us, in my opinion. First of all, when you talk about our, the city of series being able to make those changes over the next four or five years, we can't, we couldn't agree on a budget tonight. I mean, our figures are so close up and down. Um, to, to look four-year, in my opinion, look four years down the road, thinking we're, we'll, we will be able to have, add those resources and have the revenue to do those is unrealistic. Completely unrealistic to me. Uh, we face huge liability every single day and have for years with our lack of inspections on buildings, businesses, and everything. All that takes is one person to get hurt in a building or a facility that, that we're supposed to be inspecting, and we're going to write checks to those people that get hurt in those situations when they found out we haven't had inspection in that building for ten years. The Measure H thing, Measure H was, in my opinion, was developed to pay for police and fire and public safety. That's not going to change. We're still going to pay the bill with Measure H this month. Not going to change one bit. That money's going to go exactly where it goes to now. It's going to pay for firefighters, just like it does now. There's no question about that. If Ernst, somebody brought up the fact that, you know, you're not going to be in series all day. Maybe a chief won't be here all day. I don't have any question and, or any hesitation in my mind that if we needed to meet with you or wanted to, or with one of your administrative staff, that you would be there at our disposal. No question in my mind about that. So if somebody has that question, I don't know where it came from. They've, he, he and his staff have been available throughout this thing. They've, he, he and his staff have been available throughout this thing and they've been at our disposal. They've made it work for us. So there's no question that that would continue in my, in my mind. And the last thing, in November, I was elected to, to do my part to provide the best services for the citizens of series. There is no manual that came along with that. It doesn't say we need to stay, look, series, little town series. It says, provide the best services for the citizens of series. This is one way we can do that. We contract with other people for a lot of things. Why would this be any different if it's the best option? I was elected to make sure the citizens of series have the top level of service in every different way that we can provide that for them. This, without a doubt, unquestionably, gives, makes our citizens safer every single day. And without a doubt, this is something that I support and we shouldn't even question this reg- regionalization issue. I'm 100% behind it and thank you for everybody that's done all the work to make this happen.
Okay, if we can get a motion?
Motion to approve resolution number 2021 dash 57 approving a fire regionalization agreement of services between the city of series and the city of Modesto, authorizing city manager and to execute, execute the agreement.
Second, you get a roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
Councilmember Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fonda?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-1.
Yep, we got one more thing. Yeah, we do have one. Okay. Moving on to resolution number 2021 58, authorizing the application and acceptance of the Corona local fecal recovery funds established under the American Rescue Plan Act. Mr. Westbrook, this is a short presentation.
Oh, be very brief. Uh, yes, as I mentioned, the RA funds, we got our, um, password and login information today that we can submit our application. This resolution allows me to sign those applications when we're ready to submit them. And that's it.
Okay, is there anybody in the chambers that would like to talk about this? Anybody on Zoom? Any emails?
No mayor.
Text messages, phone calls? No? Okay. Counsel, is there anything that you would like to add for the moment?
Move to approve resolution number 2021 dash 58.
Second. I get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fonda?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Alright, okay. Thank you. And it looks like, uh, there's no discussion items. Any council member referrals for today?
Hey, thanks to all the chupers in the back that stayed here for four hours. Awesome.
Okay, do we have, what about reports? Do we, I don't have a report of the city council? Um, city manager?
I've had six hours.
Just wanted to remind folks that with recent council action, we did increase our administration, uh, administrative citation to $2,500 for illegal fireworks. Um, the police department has a plan to do enforcement and they will be out, um, this year. Make an announcement again and work on some of the PSAs, but, um, the fine amount has increased to $2,500. That's it.
Thank you. City attorney? Any department heads? County supervisor? Thank you. Let's end it with a bang.
Keep it brief. I just wanted to commend the city of series and the series garden club for, uh, dedicating a memorial plaque and tree to Mr. Jim Bergamashi. As we all know, Jim was an advocate for our city. He was a great volunteer and his legacy will live on. So I want to thank the city for doing that and honoring him and his family. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate your time. This meeting is officially adjourned.